This afternoon's council meeting. I'd like to start with an acknowledgement of country. The City of Glenorkie acknowledges the Palau people as the original and continuing custodians of this land on which we meet. We recognise and cherish the value of continuing Aboriginal knowledge and cultural practice and what it can teach us. And we acknowledge and pay respect to Tasmania's Aboriginal people, to elders past, present and emerging. Joining me here in council chambers this afternoon is Deputy Mayor Sohiki, Alderman Dan Dunsby, councillor Molly Kendall, Alderman Russell Yaxley, Alderman Josh Cockshut, Alderman Stuart Slade and Alderman Stuart Stephen King.
Strange.
And council's general manager Tony McMullin. We also have council directors and other staff joining us who have relevant items on tonight's council meeting and we welcome the large number in our public gallery of members of the public, members of our community joining us this afternoon and also welcome people joining us via our live stream this afternoon as well. Before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace health and safety. Glenorkie City Council takes workplace health and safety seriously and this includes physical and psychological safety. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers and members of the public who are present at councils' workplaces. Council meetings form part of councils' workplace, whether the meetings are held in person or online. It is expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Council has endorsed a statement of intent that sets out how we as elected members have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenorkie. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and in decision making that we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenorkie and to make our city the best it can be. I also note, as you heard at the beginning, our council meeting is livestreamed and is recorded. So I just note for members of the public who may speak this afternoon, just to make you aware that it is recorded and livestreamed to our Facebook page and to YouTube. We have 23 items on our agenda this afternoon and our first item is apologies. We have apologies this afternoon from councillor Harry Quick. Item two is confirmation of minutes of the open meeting. If I have someone move a motion that the minutes of the council meeting held on 27th of February have been confirmed. Thank you. Alderman Slade, someone to second. Alderman King. Alderman Slade, any discussion?
I've got nothing further to add to those.
Thank you, Alderman Slade, any discussion? Happy if I put the motion, Alderman Slade? I'll put the motion, please raise your hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Item three is announcements by the chair. I don't have any announcements this afternoon, however, I will call for someone to reorder the agenda. If someone will move a motion to reorder the agenda so 13 and 14 are swapped around, I will declare an interest in those items and vacate the chair, so makes sense to do them in one. Thank you, Alderman King, someone to second, councillor Kendall. Proceed your motion, I will put the vote, please raise your hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. That's reordering items 13 and 14. Securing interest notifications, do any elected members or staff have any security interests to note on today's agenda?
May I have a security interest in item number nine?
Item number nine, investigation of property disposal at 12 Rockstone Circle, that's noted, Alderman Slade, thank you. Any other interests? I will declare an interest in what is on our agenda as items 12 and 14 and I will vacate the chair and ask the deputy mayor to assume the chair at that time. Moving on, no other further interest? I will move on then to item five, which is response to previous public questions taken on notice and we had a question on notice from our last meeting from Jeanette Good in relation to her parents' house in Baradale being flooded and the answer is in the agenda there. Public question time, we are up to now, item six. We allow 15 minutes for public question time, however, as chair I do have discretion to extend public question time if necessary. I note that the council meeting is a formal meeting of the elected members elected by the people of Glenorkie and chaired by myself. Public question time is an opportunity in this formal meeting for the public to ask questions of your elected members about the matters that affect ratepayers and citizens. Question time is for asking questions, not making statements, however, brief explanations providing background to the questions may be given for context, but comments or statements about councils' activities are otherwise not permitted. I may commit follow-up questions, however, answers to questions are not to be debated with council. I also have discretion to refuse to answer a question or to direct a person to stop talking if I decide the question's not appropriate or in accordance with these rules. As I say, I do have discretion to extend public question time if necessary. We have received some questions on notice, one from Mr Morris Malone of West Moona in relation to councils' ownership and maintenance of the land alongside Humphreys Rivulet and the answers are included in our agenda there. Thank you, Mr Malone, for those questions. We had a question on notice from Lyn Martin of Baradale in relation to the flooding that was recently experienced, flash flooding to some properties in Baradale and again the answer to that question, those questions, is included in our agenda. We also did receive a couple of late questions on notice, which as they were not included in our agenda papers, I will read now. So one is from an unknown author. Claremont is already well-served by fast food takeaway and food delivery services. Given the current housing crisis, does the council prioritise housing for inner residential zones over 24-hour food drive-throughs? And a similar, same question almost in fact from Mr Paul Campton. Given the current housing crisis, does council support planning scheme? Local provision schedule being amended to permit a 24-hour drive-through on an inner residential zoned site? And the answer is, as at today's date, 27th of March 2023, council has not received an application requesting changes to the Glenorkie planning scheme to allow a drive-through in an inner residential zone. Should an application be made, it must be assessed against the requirements of the planning legislation and considered by the Glenorkie Planning Authority. If the planning authority thinks it meets these requirements, it is then tested through a public exhibition process where all neighbouring property owners are written to and invited to have their say. All feedback would then be considered by the Glenorkie Planning Authority at another meeting and a decision would be made on whether to continue to support the proposal or make changes. The Tasmanian Planning Commission must then consider the proposal and hold public hearings on the representations received. The commission would then decide whether approved the proposal or not. That is the answer to that one. Now I open up public question time for members of the public. Ms Lewinsky, would you like to come forward and just state your name, please, and address for the record?
Thank you, Mia. My name, my name is Wendy Lenaniski and I live in Baradale about the flooding. I was originally author of this petition in May last year, I couldn't come to the meeting without that. We had another flash flooding in January, the same thing happened. I have been in consultation with mayor and appreciate your time. But in January, we had the same situation. There has been several residents that have written to Andrew Wilkie for his support, which he did and the mayor has responded and we're very happy that there are some of these things that are going to happen. But my question is, with the obvious statement that the infrastructure is not suitable for the houses that are there at the moment, why, I believe, the council has approved for more buildings on the hill at Baradale when the infrastructure can't cope at the moment with buildings that are there? Why is there continual building on the Baradale hill when the infrastructure cannot cope with the buildings so there?
Thank you, thank you for that question. I might answer in short and then throw to general manager or director of infrastructure to follow up. So my understanding is any planning applications that come to council, any development applications that come to council go through a rigorous process of assessment, which includes looking at whether local infrastructure can accommodate increased development and certainly that is a key and really important consideration of the planning authority in determining whether to approve applications. So not only does councils, engineers provide advice on applications, but also we get advice from TasWater as well and any other relevant authorities. So we certainly do take that into consideration when deciding development applications. I'll just throw to the director of infrastructure and works.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, we do assess the capacity of our stormwater systems and numerous systems. And we determine that there's not adequate capacity to facilitate that development, then the developer has to either upgrade the system or put in a system that puts a net zero increase into the system during a rain event, which means they have to detain the water on their site and release it slowly after the event, so a detention tank or basin system. So there's other ways of dealing with it without overloading the system. But those processes and stipulations are in place at the moment.
I can tell you that that system did not work in January, apparently they failed.
The system, actually the infrastructure worked better, it was the overland flooding, the broad lot of landscaping and other matters and blocked the inlands, which is also being addressed at the moment with, I know the particular property you're talking about, that's been investigated, they have been communicated with and recommendations made on how that should be dealt with, so that there are things going in place there as well. And if I may, ma'am, through you, just as an update, there is some additional works going on at the top of Dulles where we have identified a couple of other flow parts that have contributed to this issue and that work has been scoped at the moment and is going to start in the next couple of weeks in this financial year, so we can try and get that updated and working to a much better capacity this financial year.
Thank you. Any further questions from members of the public? Mr Campton, would you like to come down, please? Thank you. Yeah, sure. Any other questions from members of the public?
Ms Brian Montrose. In December 2021, the council stated work on the Montrose Skate Park would begin in May or June 2022. The council latest daily construction is set to commence on the 27th of March 2023, which is today. Could you please provide an update of the current status of the Montrose Skate Park project and the expected date of completion?
Thank you, Ms Brian, I'm very pleased to advise that in fact work on the Montrose Skate Park is commencing this week and in fact has commenced today, director, is that right?
Some preliminary works today, but it has started for some.
Thank you, so we will have work finally underway, yes.
That's good, good for the people, for the young people of Glenorkie. In October 2022, the council stated the long-awaited works to upgrade the North Tiggle Soccer Hub had commenced and will be completed by the end of this financial year. Could you please provide an update on the progress of the North Tiggle Soccer Hub and the expected date of completion?
Thank you, Ms Brian, again, very pleased to confirm that work is well underway and the new pitches, the new turf at North Tiggal Oval has been sown, is my understanding. We are commencing work on the lighting out there as well and that is expected to be complete in June this year, is that right, director?
May possibly before June for the lighting and pitches.
Okay, great, so on track to be completed this financial year. The actual clubroom facility, new clubroom facility, design works are well underway for that and we expect that to start in the next financial year.
Right, so you wouldn't have an estimated cost of the upgrade at that size?
The budget is 8.3 million. That's the federal funding that we receive.
Sticking to that, yeah? That's good, that's all I wanted to confirm.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Brian.
I'll leave the question to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr Campton?
Thank you, Mia, and thank you for your answer to the question. I just want to clarify, is housing a priority for inner residential areas?
Yes, thank you for your question, Mr Campton, absolutely. Housing is a priority for inner residential areas and general residential areas. Our council has undertaken quite significant work over recent years to try to rezone land to generate more housing. We know that we are running out of land here in our municipality of Glenorkie and that we need to see greater density in housing and certainly that's what we're working towards. And just last week, the planning authority approved putting forward some amendments to our local provision schedules to create new specific area plans to enable higher density housing through our commercial zone along the northern suburbs apartments corridor, we're referring to it as, and also in our principal activity centre. So absolutely, housing is a priority for this council.
Thank you very much. My second question and last question is I actually commend the general manager on his letter of the 5th of August 2022 to CBos about the McGill Rise where he says, the systems, there would be a question, the system fails when there's not a private certifier's professional and strong licensing. Further on, he says, problems arose primarily because of the apparent low standard of professionalism and independence displayed by the private certifiers by the developer. My question relates to consultants' reports, be it traffic or acoustic, sought and paid by the developers. What processes does the council have in place, given the highly technical nature of the reports, to ensure that accuracy and adherence to technical standards? Does, for example, council require the raw traffic and acoustic data sets to be submitted so that can be analysed independently if concerns arise?
Thank you, Mr Campton, I might refer to the general manager to that one.
Thank you, ma'am. So I guess it depends on the nature of the speciality. So we, council retains some specialist expertise in-house, so in the case of, for example, a traffic engineer on the port, we do have a traffic engineer who can, a specialist traffic engineer who can review that information. When it comes to something that's more highly specialised like acoustic engineering, for example, we're really relying on the professional ethics and the expertise of that acoustic engineer to provide what they do. In the past, we have, this is going back some time, I remember, with an acoustic engineering report, we did seek some advice from within the state government, from an acoustic engineer there, but generally we are, if we have expertise in-house, we'll generally rely on that expertise to review the specialist engineer's report. If not, we're either in a position where we need to rely on the professional expertise of the expert or alternatively, if necessary, seek our own advice in relation to that. So we might sometimes seek, sorry, just as an afterthought, we might sometimes seek a peer review, for example, is one way we do it.
Do you ever analyse, ask for data sets to double-check their calculations?
I'd have to take that when I notice, ma'am, but I suspect that what often happens is that in the case, let's say, of a traffic engineering report, the traffic engineer will have a look at the reasonableness of the assumptions that have been made and if there are questions raised arising from that, then we would be going back to that specialist and seeking further advice. The director has something further to add?
Yep, ma'am, rather than taking those, I'll try and answer that now. Certain aspects of development applications that we get and the information provided, we would check the data on, stormwater being a classic one, we have some stormwater modelling, we would do some checks and balances to make sure that the systems can take it, as being probably recommended by consultants. As the general manager said, specialist things like acoustics, we would rely on the expert and they would have to certify their advice. If there are some, just say, if we're sceptical about it, we can actually ask for an independent review of that, but we do actually analyse the information that we receive from.
So you put XDR software, the traffic that analyses it, isn't it?
We've got some software that's got some XDR, but we've got a trapping engineer who is especially qualified in that area to check it against the relevant code. And our hydraulic engineers also do have specialist software that they use as well.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr Campton. Any further questions from members of the public? Mr Alderton?
Good afternoon, it's this time of the day, haven't I?
Good afternoon, yes.
I have a couple of questions for council this afternoon, for purposes of those watching online, Shane Holden, 296 Main Road, Austin's Ferry. My first question tonight, and firstly, just like to applaud council for the cost savings you've made in the last financial year, but this question I'm going to ask tonight is about item 11, review of council services, update the arts and culture section, and it's around cost savings basically. So we go through the report here and on page 35, you've got some business forecast comparisons of expenditure up around the $600,000 a year, revenues only up around about $100,000, your salary's about $450,000. So going on what it says over the page, I'm of the belief, does our art sector and our MAC One facility, does that operate at a considerable loss every year and what would that loss be?
Thank you, Mr Alderton, I think the figures you're referring to there are the latest figures, so I might refer to the general manager to talk to the specific loss and then I'll add some commentary.
Through you, ma'am. So, Mr Alderton, the reference you make to page 35, that is a piece of modelling that the consultant has done to look at the 21, 22 actuals against what would be expected under the 2015 business case, that would be business case when the centre was open and would be based on the 2015 business plan. So that's actually showing, it's, that's looking to show that council has been operating the centre in a way that's consistent with the business plan, which is the case. And in fact, you'll see that both revenue and expenditure are broadly speaking close to the assumptions in that plan. But over the page, on page 38, is more definitive information. So, I mean, effectively, there's no question, the Moona Arts Centre and the Arts and Culture Programme generally, which operates through the city and not just out of the Moona Arts Centre, there's certainly more expenditure than revenue. This is a grassroots community arts programme and facility and it, by name, operates at a profit which would not be expected from a facility that resides in. So, yeah, those figures indicate both the annual budget and the forecast and you'll see there that there is expected to be additional revenue, significant additional revenue, but also significant additional expenditure this year, which reflects, I think reflects the fact that the facility is operating at a greater level and therefore if you're holding more events, you incur more costs. So, effectively.
I realise that, but following this is some interest of some time now, the deficit every year seems to be growing and growing and growing and growing. And from a council that prides itself on reducing costs and cutting back costs, one would think that in part of the process of reviewing this tonight, you'd try to somehow review and I realise and understand you're always going to have a deficit, but as a council, I consider you would try to cut back that deficit and cut back those costs somehow.
Through you, ma'am. I mean, there are a range of, in this report, we're talking about a range of measures and the status of those measures to date, a range of measures to look at further improvements to how the centre operates. So whilst the report and the consultant concludes that we've been operating consistent with the 2015 business plan, the consultant, working with council staff, has identified a range of refinements we can make and we will be looking to a new business plan to look at making further gains in that regard, but the reality is, we could be under no misapprehension that we're not turning this into a profit-making venture because it is a grassroots community arts centre and many of council operations do not operate at a profit because they're operating for the community. I can look at, for example, a range of our community halls and things like that that have been leased out to the community at significantly under market rates because they're there to foster community activity and are not commercial ventures per se, they are really broadly within the remit of government and the role of government to grow community.
Right, so on the periods that MAC One, for example, or MAC Lay's idle, does council or has council considered leasing or using a facility out to the private sector so it generates income rather than sit idle?
My understanding is that the, you know, obviously a lot, we have a centre with multiple spaces, you know, we've got a performance space, we've got gallery spaces, we've got meeting room spaces and we've got a makers workshop space. So there are a range of spaces. My understanding is that the facility is highly utilised and highly booked and of course we also have, you know, bump in and bump out with things, so, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, in between something coming in and something going out, the work has to be able to take and set things up. So my understanding is that it is a highly utilised facility at the moment. We are certainly looking at further, so you might have seen in the report, one of the things we're looking at is working with an arts organisation to explore whether we can, whether we can lease out a meeting room to them. So we are looking at options to bring in other organisations to assist with sharing the cost of the facility.
Right, if just when comparing this facility to the private sector, the private sector wouldn't operate at this sort of loss, no way in the world, they'd go bankrupt.
There are a whole range of, there are a whole range of council activities that you wouldn't run this way in the private sector because they're purely and simply the province of government and the role of government isn't just to make a profit. If this was all about making a profit, then council could certainly put its rates up to very high levels and make a big profit each year, but that's not, that's not the business this council feels is in for the community.
You want to make it at least cost, yeah. You want to reduce the cost and the deficit as much as possible is the point where I'm at. I don't speak council in turn, make it into a revenue-making business and make a profit out of it, but at least, I can't understand why you'd lease something out of, say, $18 an hour if it's costing you $20 an hour to run, you'd at least lease it out at the cost value.
Perhaps if I may.
Through you, ma'am, I was just going to say, that's exactly why we're looking at the review of the business plan. So we will be looking very closely at our fees and charges, but the reality is that this is about promoting arts and cultural activity within our city, it's not purely about making a buck.
No, I realise that, but from a ratepayer's point of view, I'd like to say you're running something like this is cost neutral at the very least.
Yeah, this is a facility that its expenditure is roughly 1% of council's overall expenditure budget, so just to put it in context.
Right.
I might just add to that, general manager, Mr Alderton, that if you consider council's support or the revenue that council puts towards sport and recreation facilities and if we were to try to recover costs on sporting clubrooms and sports ground hire at a level that meant for a cost recovery, then it would be totally cost prohibitive for people to engage in sport and recreation. So same goes with community arts and culture, similar thing, what we are trying to do is provide opportunities for everyone to be able to participate in sport and recreation and in arts and culture activities. This is not, this is not rich artists we're talking about coming along to use the MAC at a cheap rate on the, at the ratepayers' expense. This is a community art facility, we're trying to support developing artists, whether that be through music or, you know, written art, painting, other forms of art, that's what it's about. So as the general manager has said, we're. So as the General Manager has said, we provide a number of, we subsidise a number of community facilities and services and activities that are deemed appropriate for local government to, to do to support communities.
Right. Okay, thank you. So I just have a couple of questions now in regards to rezoning of land, which has been brought up earlier in a couple of questions this evening. So my question's regarding rezoning of land. When council takes into consideration the rezoning of land, I, whether you go from commercial to residential or residential back to commercial, do you factor into that decision-making the impact that decision would have on neighbouring properties in regards to devaluation of neighbouring properties and maybe the potential for neighbouring properties to seek compensation from council if neighbouring properties were devalued as a result of a council zoning decision?
The General Manager is a planner, so I might defer to him to answer this one.
So the situation is, first of all, the answer to the question is, yes, we do take into account the, the impact on neighbouring properties. So one of the fundamental underlying principles of, of our planning system is, is trying to minimise conflict between different land uses. So, so in other words, you know, a, a, a facility that's operating that might be causing a problem for adjoining residents, that is definitely front and centre of planning issue, and one would be taken into account, along with a whole range of other checks and balances that council has to take into account. The, the planning system, the legislation stipulates we've got to look at a whole wide range of things. And in, in relation to the question of loss of value around properties, generally, that's not something that the planning system takes into account. But, you know, if, if council's looking at impacts on surrounding land uses and whether something is going to be unreasonable from a land use impact point of view, then it is kind of a proxy for value as well. But, but the planning system doesn't deal with value, because otherwise, we're talking about everyone needing to get a valuation to, to resolve all of these things, and it's just not practical. So the planning system doesn't do that per se, but it does look at those residential impacts along with another, other things. The other thing, as the mayor said, if, if we're referring about a specific proposal in, in Clamont, as the mayor said, we are yet to receive a proposal, but Alderman are aware of the proposal from correspondence that's been received, which I think is similar to what the neighbours have received. Council can't really form a view about an application before it's been received, but a look at applications on their merits, and that's done through our Planning Authority, which is another forum from the full council. But the process that would be required in that instance would also pick up the Tasmanian Planning Commission. So if you like, the community will have two bites of the cherry in relation to this process. One is, one is an opportunity to comment to council, and the second is an opportunity to comment to, to the Tasmanian Planning Commission. So, you know, if, if, if a proposal goes that far, so just, just, it's a general, just giving a general heads up on the process.
I guess from my point of view, from a legal, from a legal viewpoint, though, I guess there was a third process where, you know, litigation, in this day and age, litigation is, is highly possible against any organisation, organisation, council, anybody that's impacting on the value of somebody else's property through a decision they make. There aren't legal avenues, of course.
Not under the land you're planning at?
No.
Right. That's what I wanted. It is, it's, all right. Okay. That's all for the questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alderton. I, I am happy to keep extending question time if there are further questions from members of the public joining us this afternoon. Any further questions? Going, gone. Gone. I'll just add to that, just to confirm, I guess, because I, I feel like that, perhaps, that question around the rezoning of land is, is a hot topic at the moment, as just to make really clear, council has not currently received an application. There is no proposal before council. So in short, there's nothing at this time to actually object to or for council to formally consider objections to. And should it get to that point where an application is made, there will be an opportunity for members of the community to, to provide formal representations, but it may not even get to that point. So really important that whilst we're hearing the concerns and receiving a lot of emails from the community, and, and we do acknowledge those concerns, at the moment, there is nothing before council to actually object to at this time. So I just wanted to make that really, really clear. Okay, moving on then to item seven, petitions or deputations addressing a council meeting. Are there any, General Manager?
Don't be.
No. Moving on then to item eight, activities of the mayor. And I will say too, yes, you don't need to stay for the entire meeting if you don't wish, we do enjoy having members of the public stay, but don't feel you, you have to stay around. So we have a recommendation that council have received a report about activities of Mayor Thomas during the period, Monday 20th of February to Sunday 19th of March. Moved Alderman King, someone to second, Alderman Cocksher, Alderman King, any discussion?
You met with Assistant Police Commissioner and Commander Tim Dooley. Did you meet with them or did they meet with you? Which?
Yes, thank you, Alderman King. The Assistant Police Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner Bodnar requested to meet with the General Manager and I just to check in on how we feel about how things are going in Glanorki and whether we are satisfied with the police response. They have, they have stepped up their proactive patrolling in recent months and... Sorry, excuse me, ladies, can I just ask that you, ah, sorry, and gentlemen, have your conversation outside, it's just a bit distracting if you're talking up there. They have increased their proactive patrolling through our CBD area, and they wanted to just check in and see if we're happy with that, and, and check in on our relationship with Glanorki Police and make sure we felt well-served by, by Glanorki Police.
And do we feel well-served?
Yes, I think we do. We do have a wonderful relationship with Inspector Ward, he's very responsive, and we, and we really ask that that proactive between policing continues and passed on how, how grateful we are for that, and, and the community is for that as well.
That's all from me, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? Alderman Cocksher.
Thank you, Mayor. I can see on here you've met with the Deputy Premier and Minister Barnett regarding priorities for Greater Hobart and the Greater Hobart Committee meeting. I was wondering if you could give the council an update on what the agenda was there and if there's any positive discussions with Deputy Premier and Minister Barnett?
Thank you, Alderman Cocksher. So the Greater Hobart mayor's put forward a budget submission to the state government budget process, outlining our budget priorities for Greater Hobart and seeking state government support for those. So we took the opportunity before the, the Greater Hobart Committee meeting to meet with the Deputy Premier, Michael Ferguson, and Minister Guy Barnett to talk them through our budget priorities, which were, and I spoke to the activation of the Northern Suburbs Transit Corridor and particularly the urban growth component of that. So we're seeking $500,000 through the state budget process to contribute towards planning for the infrastructure needs to enable development of housing along that particular corridor. So jointly working on a project together with Hobart, seeking $500,000 for that purpose, General Manager, that's right, isn't it?
That's correct.
There were three other priorities. One was around active transport, the other one is around the wharf, the Macquarie Wharf upgrades that are required, and I've gone blank on the fourth one. General Manager, help me out.
Bus stops.
Bus stops, bus stop infrastructure. So seeking additional funding for the upgrade of bus stops to ensure they are compliant with the Disability Discrimination Act, and also ideally resolving the bus stop ownership issue that we continue to negotiate with the government on. That was all, wasn't it, General Manager, for that meeting?
From memory, yes.
Then following that, we had the Greater Hobart Committee meeting, which we endorsed the implementation plan for the Greater Hobart Plan, and that's hopefully available on the Greater Hobart Committee landing page on the Hobart City Council website this week, and I'll provide elected members with some information about that via email.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Any further questions? Now I'll go back to the mover, Alderman King.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good, I'll put the motion. Please raise your hand if you are for. Carried unanimously. Item nine, investigations into property disposal at 12 Rossay Circle, Goodwood, and we have a recommendation that council endorse the commencement of investigations with the potential disposal of 12 Rossay Circle, Goodwood, CT 1565051, by donation to Carity Aboriginal Corporation. Authorise council staff to undertake a community engagement process to identify any concerns about the potential disposal of land, and require a further report to council summarising the feedback received and identifying any concerns, and seeking approval to proceed or not proceed with the statutory process of public land disposal. And I know Alderman King is leaving the meeting at 4:13, ah, sorry, Alderman Slade. 4:30. Oh, I'm being very strange, but no, no, no. 4:30 PM. Thank you. Do I have someone to move this recommendation as a motion?
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman King. Someone to second, Alderman Dunsby. Alderman King, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I am still here.
I'm pleased about that.
Yeah. This is fairly straightforward, this is just a preliminary process to get things moving, to see where it goes. And at the moment, that's all I see it as, and it's just kickstarting things to see whether it's appropriate or suitable to do so. So I'm happy for it to, to take the course of action.
Right. Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? Alderman Yaxley.
Through you, ma'am. Just a couple of questions, just in terms of just assessing the risks, not necessarily here, but in other arrangements. So does the council have any other existing arrangements with any other organisations that are similar in our city? That, particularly of the management, whether there are allowed use of land that they could then request a donation for? And if that's a yes, does that decision then set a precedent for others to request a donation? I guess that was just a, a risk thing that's always...
Yes. Question, thank you, Alderman Yaxley. General Manager?
Through you, ma'am. We have a range of licence arrangements with, with a range of community organisations throughout the city for various pieces of council-owned land, as well as lease arrangements, of course. I, I think, I think the, what we would say is this is a fairly unique circumstance where the organisation, organisation has, has operated from the site for a long time and has been using this piece of land under licence for some, some years. And in terms of creating a precedent, it's a, that's a difficult one to answer. I would say that council would consider requests on their merits, on their individual merits, and we would need to look at the individual merits. In this particular instance, we all understand the history of our country and, and this perhaps has particular resonance for that reason, but we would consider other requests on their merits, but, you know, in each case, we need, you know, council will need to form a view as to what is, what is appropriate in this circumstance.
So it's a case-by-case scenario.
That's correct. But it could be argued it sets, it could be argued it sets a precedent, but I think we look at each one on a case-by-case.
Yep. Okay. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Stephanie Matt.
Excuse me. Yes, I like the idea, and I definitely think it should go out for consecutive investigations. I'm just wondering, following the lead, my good colleague, do we ever put caveats on properties where if they cease to be used for their original purpose, i.e. the Carity organisation is fantastic, but if for some reason that was to fail or shut down or something into the future, that the land would revert to the council so that we might use it, I don't know, housing for domestic violence people? I, I'm really kind of keen to actually honour a commitment to give the land a pack, but I do see that there would be some future areas, like, we need to set up a risk profile process that looks at those potentials, because land is not, we're not going to get any more of it.
Through you, ma'am. We'll, we'll have a look at that as an option as part of this process.
Thank you, Stephanie Matt. Anything further?
I've said enough, squeaked enough.
Any further discussion? Councilor Kendall?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm excited by the prospect of, of this, and I'm really happy that they've made the submission. It seems like a very rare opportunity that councils don't often get a chance to consider. So I'm really happy that we're progressing the investigation in these initial stages. I, yeah, especially of note, I think the potential to deliver further community services will be hugely increased, not only to the Indigenous community, but to the wider non-Indigenous community as well, and also noting that the public, that it will have public benefit and that the public space won't be disrupted or access to the public space. Yeah, and I just like the idea of that at the same time when a, a national conversation is happening, just getting in there and taking some local action is very appealing. But, yeah, so happy to support this progressing to investigation.
Thank you, Councilor Kendall. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I say ditto what councillor Kendall said, all of the above. I think it's, we have a fantastic relationship with Carity, and we have done for quite some time now, and this is something we've been discussing with them over, over a period of time, and now it's become more important and necessary because they need to expand their services, their demand for services just continues to grow, and they pride themselves on not only supporting our Aboriginal community members here in Glanorki, but also everyone is welcome at Carity, and they run a number of programmes and services that anyone in our community can benefit from, a very inclusive organisation. So I too am happy to support these recommendations. It is only a very small parcel of land within the broader parcel of land that, that Carity occupies up there on the hill with a beautiful view to Kanani, 0.19 hectares. So it's unlikely to be detrimental from an open space perspective to our community. Remain publicly accessible land helps us to build trust with our Aboriginal community and respect, and that's something that aligns with the direction we're taking through the development of our reconciliation action plan, which we're partway through drafting at the moment and consulting with community and, and Aboriginal community on at the moment. Carry, I've been managing this land for some time anyway. You know, I was somewhat minded to ask the question of do we need to go through the, the lengthy process that we take as a council to actually do the initial consultation? Or can we go straight into the Section 178 process, given it is only a small parcel of land and they are managing it anyway? But I think, you know, in fairness to the, to the broader community, we ought to follow the process that we have agreed upon and be consistent with that, and hopefully it can be done in a way that means the process is done as quickly as possible and, and that we do receive support from the community for this proposed disposal by way of donation.
There's nothing further. I shall go back to the mover. Alderman King, are you still here?
Still here, thank you, Mayor. I endorse the comments of my fellow, particularly Alderman Yaxley's comments around the potential that it could cause for other bodies to want to have land donated that have been sitting on that land and using it for a long period of time. I note that I may be involved in that without declaring interest, but there are a lot of sporting bodies and community bodies that do sit on land and have sat on land probably a lot, a lot, a lot longer than this body. So we need to take that into consideration as part of this process, but this is just an embryonic state, as far as I'm concerned, about getting it going and seeing where we go with it, so we move forward.
Thank you, Alderman King. I will put to the motion. Please raise your hand if you are for. Carried unanimously. And will someone please retrieve Alderman Slade? It's easy to see here, would you like to turn the air con on? It's just me that's hot. Just me, yeah, it's warm. Don't touch that, though. He's got his nose wet.
Me, the one who's qualified to touch it.
Well, that's where we went wrong last time.
I wonder if David, if he could pass some...
It's freezing last time.
Some water.
David, can you pass some water?
Sure.
It's up to Alderman Dunsby, he's missed out somehow. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Alderman Slade has returned at 4:22. Okay, moving on then to item 10, Glanorki City Council's strategic plan 2023 to 2032 community feedback. And we have a recommendation that the council note the feedback invited from the community, other stakeholders and council staff during the public consultation period between 28th of February and 19th of March on the draft strategic plan and the changes to the notified draft strategic plan in response to that feedback. Two, adopt the Glanorki City Council's strategic plan set out in attachment four. And three, require the General Manager to further review the performance measures required to monitor council's performance against the strategic plan. The report to be brought back to council before 30th of June, setting out the recommended measures. Do you have someone to move this as a motion? Moved Alderman King, someone to second, Alderman Yaxley. Alderman King, over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is note... Again, this is note feedback invited from the community, another stakeholders, I'd like to let the community know that we spent a lot of time on this, it was two and a half, two full day and a half day workshops, plus a lot of other discussions around this. And if you put three people in a room, you'll come up with five opinions. So the more questions we ask, the more opinions we get, but I think we've come to a fairly reasonable position on this almost fluid document.
Thank you Alderman King, any further discussion? Alderman Yaxley.
Through you Mayor, so I just want to point out that there was sixteen feedback submissions and ten, have you say, submissions in terms of the feedback, which is obviously, obviously a small, small number, but again, I think it's the importance of providing the opportunity for our community to be, to be part of the process. So I think that, I think, I thank those that did take the effort and I appreciate their efforts in making comments. And I guess for mine is that, you know, our strategic plan really sets our path and our direction, so we're here about delivering results for our community, and I know that our, around the table and our teams in council and employees are passionate about delivering on those, on those each and every day. So, so yeah, so I think, you know, it's a positive thing and I agree with all the recommendations.
Thank you Alderman Yaxley, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I share Alderman Yaxley's concern. Every, every time we discuss anything like this that we put out for consultation to the people of Gwannawki, the response has been nothing short of pathetic, and it's very dis, I don't know, it's dissatisfying that people just don't seem to care, they don't understand the significance, I think, of a document like this. Clearly when, you know, a proposal might come up that affects their direct house or where they live, it does stir up emotion, but a document like this is actually affecting their whole community and can possibly affect areas around their house. So I just don't know what magic bullet we need to inspire our community to be interested in these documents, because they are about their future and their grandchildren's future in this city and sort of govern the decisions that we make and put a lot of work and policies and procedures and strategic plans and draft plans, and good to know what other levels of documents come off this. So again, terribly disappointed, and that's not a reflection of our offices, I can see all the work they've tried, they've tried to put it out everywhere except on the front page of the mercury for obvious reasons, and I don't think even that looks to tear anybody up anymore. So maybe we'd be all better going out to a basketball game with a football to get some better responses. But having said that, we know we have looked at it, we know our officers have looked at it, we know our consultants and staff have looked at it, and I do believe it is a good document, and therefore I'm happy to ratify it to go out. Please, anyone listening out there in Eastland, come and get a copy of it, make a comment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, any further discussion?
Sorry, just to add, add something I forgot to mention, just regarding the measurements in the actual document itself, and my comment on that would be that I'd rather take a little bit extra time to get them right, not just to make them words on a bit of paper, and that's something that we can be accountable to and have an actual, really good understanding of what the result was from the blame. So for mine is taking a little bit extra time to develop and research those sort of things is smart, logical, so just wanted to add that.
It was a good question.
Thank you, it was a good question. Alderman Dunstby.
Thank you, which is actually stole my words. No, but I did also want to make comment as well, I think that with the strategic plan, they are big words, long words that people just don't want to read, and I think this is one thing where we have to accept that we're taking this decision-making on behalf of our community. We've given them the opportunity for feedback, it's not something they're going to give us feedback on, I think we just have to accept that, I agree, I'm disappointed, I'd love to get lots of feedback, I just think that's one of the things we have to take on our shoulders, that we've made the right decisions and take that responsibility ourselves. Also reiterate, what councillor, Alderman Yaxley said, in that taking the time to put in the appropriate performance measures is a good decision to make, we're not rushing into it, we have set ourselves a timeline on that, and I think that the report will be better for it, or the plan will be better for it, that we're taking that decision as well, in the decision that was made to go in that trap.
Thank you, thank you Alderman Dunstby, any further discussion? Council General.
Yeah, so just to add that I think we didn't have quantity of feedback, but we definitely had quality of feedback, and I commend the council officers for really bringing those suggestions in and paying attention to them and giving some great feedback, there were some good changes, like moving housing from open for business to making lives better, and yeah, some really great inclusions and changes as a result of that, so if that gives the community any encouragement that your feedback really is taken on board. There were lots of mentions of environmental measures and carbon accounting, inclusivity and multicultural community, and Taswater made some great suggestions in putting targets against our measures, which I agree with my fellow elected members, but yeah, we really need to take the time to get those right.
Thank you, Council General, any further discussion? Alderman Slade.
Yes, thanks Mayor, I've been through a number of, I think we all have it in our busy lives, strategic planning sessions, whether it be in our private or our corporate sectors, in particular local government. What really infused me about this one was the collegiality, the collegiality which clearly showed itself between the elected members and the staff, the senior managers. I hadn't seen anything like that in probably three decades, and I thought it was really strong, and that is a result of blaming each other, respecting each other's views, and wanting to be in that motor car that's taking fifty thousand people somewhere between two thousand twenty-three onwards is a big responsibility, and we've got the role of doing that, but I feel more comfortable that some great outcomes have come from that working along that great innocent format. And I think what we're doing now, we've really got ourselves into some exciting stages that where before they were left on the bookshelf, or perhaps I should get back to the car, in the boot, they're actually there, you know, whether it be the environment, whether it be, you know, the arts, whether it be what we're doing more in sport and written, those sort of things. So we have changed our thinking, and the strategic plan clearly reflected that, and though not a lot of people may have participated, we know for our own groups that what people are saying. So I think this time does, I think it's really, really going to be a really good one, General Manager, to harness measurements on, because it's very tangible, and from that, I left exhausted, I've gone a couple of days, but apart from that, it was good, it was good to feel that this is going to be a document that's going to drive the direction for the city of Gwannawki. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Slade, any further discussion?
I really appreciate those comments and also share that sentiment, that it was really a collegiate process, and that was something that was really critical for us in coming together as a relatively newly-elected council, and all taking some level of ownership of our strategy and our strategic direction going forward. It's something that will, I think will put us in good stead to really deliver some key outcomes for our community and refocus our efforts as a council, using the limited, somewhat limited resources that we have to make sure we are investing in what matters most to the people of Gwannawki. And we've been through a couple of election cycles in the last couple of years, and through that period, what we heard was that people want to see us focus on a clean, a clean and safe city, you know, and that really important priorities for the people of Gwannawki are having great roads and footpaths and open space areas and playgrounds, really serving those core purposes of a council in the traditional sense, but also that our community values some of the role we play in community development and in arts and culture, and that we recognise the changing demographic and continued growth in our city, with around nine percent growth since the last census between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one, we are growing significantly, our demographic is changing, and we need to be adaptable and flexible as we develop strategic plans and annual plans to meet the needs of our changing community. So I think that's what's demonstrated through the objectives and the strategies that we've chosen for this strategic plan, and I really look forward to going to this next stage of working through our annual plan, which will be the more tangible things that will demonstrate to our community how we're going to deliver on those objectives, those, through those strategies. So looking forward to getting on with that, and really appreciate the collaborative effort of the council and, and the meaningful feedback that we did receive from the few members of the community who did take the time to comment, look forward to working further on the measures, and some of the feedback we got was really useful, food for thought for us in further refining those measures, so I look forward to, again, us coming together and having that shared ownership of those measures. It's important that we have meaningful measures to be able to track our progress over the next four years for us as a council term and through the life of the strategic plan over ten years. So looking forward to getting on with delivering.
Any further discussion? Back to move, Alderman King, close debate.
Thank you Mayor, no debate on this, just happy and certainly concur with particularly Alderman Slade's comments around collegiality of the whole thing, and it is definitely the best workshop process I've been involved in since being on council here and probably got the best outcomes of anything we've done. I'd really like to thank the staff, the facilitators and fellow Alderman for the effort that was put in to get to the point right now, and it was a lot of effort, a lot of time, it was Mondays, as people know, and Saturdays, and you know, it's been very busy and effective time spent, so thank you.
Thank you Alderman King, I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you're for. That's Carrie unanimously. Moving on then to item eleven, review of council services update, arts and culture, MAC section. We have a recommendation that council note this review of council services update, including the review of the arts and culture slash MAC section, and to authorise a review of the MAC business plan with a report to be brought back to council within six months. Do I have someone to move this as a motion? Moved Deputy Mayor, someone to second, Alderman Slade, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I think this was a good report and preliminary review rather, and I'm looking forward to seeing the full master plan, because there were some strange things that came out acknowledging, I think it was ninety-four different charging rates or something, it shouldn't sound incredibly efficient. As Mr Alderton pointed out, this is a loss-making exercise for the council, and normally that would be a great concern to someone like myself, but if we took that approach, we would have no parks, we would have no swimming pool, we would not offer public toilets, and we wouldn't clean up the mountain or put in bike tracks. So unfortunately, there are obligations to a local government body, and arts is another creative outlet as significant and as important mentally and emotionally to a city as sport is, as some might take me down over that. I think it's another thing that adds benefit and an outlet for creativity and bringing community together. So whilst in any organisation, it's a necessity of life that business plans must be reviewed, there's always efficiencies to be found and new ways of doing business, and a fresh set of eyes on something that has had a very emotional attachment to this organisation. I've seen some previous Aldermen, you know, fight very hard to keep this going, and I've also met some very passionate and incredibly well-informed staff at this organisation, and it's lovely to see members of the community from outside of Munna and Gwannawki coming to visit those facilities. I think it's a shame it's called MAC, I don't think that does anything for it, but you know, it hasn't been able to leverage off the Mona effect as well as it could have done or should have done. But having said that, I'm really looking forward to the review to see how we can keep it alive, thriving, and you know, give the staff that work their jobs that really keep them energised, give back to the public a service that meets all of the needs of the community and particularly the artists of our district.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor, any further discussion? Alderman Yaxley.
Thank you Mayor, through you, yeah, sort of the deputy Mayor, and I hope that the review finds better ways for it to fund itself and close that gap, you know, I'd really like to see the deficit close a little bit, so I'm looking forward to seeing that report in six months' time to review.
Thank you, former co-chair.
Thank you Mayor, I agree with my fellow Alderman's comments, it is good to see that over thirty thousand people in the last year have gone through the MAC, and it's from the diverse programmes, exhibition workshops and performances, and like the Alderman have said, art does play a very important place in our city and community, not just sport and recreation and parks, so it's good to have that, and yes, it is a loss leader, how do we minimise that gap and still have it for emerging artists and people, and get people into the city and make use of the facility we've got there, so get the best use out of it.
Thank you, former co-chair, any further discussion? Council General.
Yes, so I will just say that the work that the MAC does is fantastic, it is hugely valued by our community and all of the visitors that go there for the wonderful events that they host every year, yeah, just acknowledging all of the many steps that are in this plan for reducing the costs that the staff have already been through and the impact of that. And yeah, just, I guess my concern is for the wellbeing of the staff, and that's reflected in the risk, in the risk table in the minutes, so to make sure that we really make sure as this process happens that the, yeah, the views and the opinions of the staff are respected and listened to on their terms. And yeah, I think some of the efficiency measures will probably be welcomed by our staff, and yeah, that's my only comment, just that the work of the MAC is hugely valued by the community and it's an investment, it doesn't, it's not a, arts isn't a money-maker, but it's an investment in the, the culture and the character of our place, so it's well worth it in my eyes.
Thank you Council General, any further discussion? Alderman Slade.
Yeah Mayor, look, I support the recommendation, I think it's very clear what it's trying to do there. I've always supported the arts in the city, I just think that, look, as I said before, we all have our interest groups for our different aspects of our community, whether it be our sporting and other things, we've all been through, I'm not going to repeat myself too much in here, but they all cost money to the rate at the end of the day. What, and Alderman, sorry, Council General's mentioned a word that's very important, it's called place, and the place of the art centre and what it does to respective people, whether bringing them through as emerging artists, whether it's helping them with their mental health, whether it's helping them in relation to a learning process through school, whether it's helping them through a regular liaison, through meeting people, there's a lot of things there that are so tangible, you simply can't put a dollar price on, but I believe the council has a responsibility and a service to provide those sort of things, a building like that. I think, having been on the steering chair in the steering committee for the start of this back in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, to me, I still think it's a great building, it's a great deliver of services. It was never going to be a money-making organisation, I think his comment you made Mayor is probably a valid one, I think if we can get those linkages a little bit closer between Mona and the art centre somehow, that would be great. I think those sort of things will increase the revenue and perhaps just a little bit more stormblazing amongst ourselves and the valuable staff down there, we might just be able to get this scars to go down where the revenue is up more than the expenditure, but I just think there's a lot more things to do. I think it's an intricate part of Munna, not just an intricate part of Gwannawki, but it's an intricate part of Munna, I mean, and people, sorry Deputy, but people refer to, oh now I've got to go out to the MAC, or where's that building, or where's that restaurant, it's just around the corner from the MAC, so I think it has got a bit of a symbolism or a bit of a name for itself, but I just think in this report here, I'm open, as much as any other elected member should be, is the fact is that we're, especially the second part, authorised review, the report we brought back, and I'll wait to see that in relation to what comes after that, thank you very much.
Thank you Alderman Slade, any further comments?
No. I too am pleased to see this report come to council, and I thank the General Manager for progressing the review, it was one of a number of reviews that council asked General Manager and the staff to undertake last year when we were putting the screws on a bit and, and doing our duty as a board to really review. to really review, I guess, the, every opportunity we have to make sure we're delivering services efficiently and demonstrate the value that they provide to the community. So I want to make it really clear, particularly to the staff involved in our creative communities area, that this review was never about questioning the value of the activities and the services that the Moona Arts Centre provides. That was never the intention. I think as we've all heard, as we've heard around the table this afternoon, we as elected members know the value that the activities of the team provides to our community. And we know how well-valued and supported it is by not only our community but Greater Hobart. And some might question, and I certainly have battled with this in my mind, admit, as to whether we should somewhat fund services where we have users come in from other municipalities. And I think, well, probably people from Galnorki go and use parks and playgrounds at Claremont and Kingborough every now and then, don't they? So I guess it's click pro quo. We do live in a greater Hobart area and that's part of what we provide is for sharing, I guess. So I'll stop being greedy about that. But I really appreciate the findings that have come back. I feel like one of the recommendations is to confirm council's core mission for the Moona Arts Centre. And I feel like getting a shared understanding of this between staff and elected members is crucial if we are to avoid any tension around cost and value to community going forward. So I look forward to us through annual planning processes and perhaps through this review of the business plan, having the opportunity to be on a shared same page, a shared understanding of that value to the community. Because certainly for me, out of the review, I want to be able to be really clearly articulate to the community about what the value of the MAC actually is. And, you know, we can say it in broad terms, but, you know, if we get asked questions from community members about it's making a $550,000 loss, it's costing the rate payers $550,000 a year, I want to say yes, and that's okay because X, Y, Z. And let's be really clear about what that value proposition is. We need to be able to do the same to support the recreation and all of the other services we provide as well. And that's something that we continue to work on and have conversations about through our budget processes. And we will continue, no doubt, to have conversations about as we go through this current budget process as well. So I'm pleased that this review has come forward. I understand that any reviews can have impact on staff and make staff feel threatened. But again, I reiterate that that was never intent to question the value of the services that the Moona Arts Centre provides. And we, as a board of an organisation, really do have a responsibility, both to the organisation and the people that we represent, to do reviews every now and then to make sure services are meeting community needs and again to demonstrate that value. So that's what I see reviews as opportunity rather than as threats. And I'm pleased to see us reviewing the business plan. It was last done in 2015, so probably a bit overdue for review. And I think it provides a real opportunity to further boost and promote the wonderful work that the Moona Arts Centre and the team does and the value it provides to the community. So I look forward to seeing that report come back and perhaps having some conversations around the table before it does as well.
Just a quick point to add on to what you were saying there. People that do come in from outside of Galnorki or outside of Moona, they bring business also to that area, which is added value to those people who pay rates for being in our business strip. So I think we've got to be mindful of them as well. And those of us that were all at the time when this was opened saw a definite change to the mindset of Moona. We always thought it would be. It's definitely changed and it's lifted the type of businesses that they're. So it's really grown Moona from a little town to a big town, in a grown-up town. So I think we have to take that into consideration as well, as to what it brings to that area. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? I'll go back to the Moona, who wants Deputy Mayor to close debate. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will put the motion to the vote. Please raise your hand if you're for. That's carried unanimously. Moving on to item 12, nominations for General Management Committee of Local Government Association of Tasmania, and I shall vacate the chair and hand over to Deputy Mayor. And then we will proceed to item 14. And please let me know when you get up.
Thank you. You know that the mayor is retiring at whatever time it is, 4.48 in the morning. And I've just got to whiz back to the right sheet here.
Squeak up there, Deputy Mayor. What did you say?
Was that squeaker?
Squeaker.
No, squeaker. Okay, sorry. I really believe it, I've just lost it. Yes, give me a coffee. Got my attachments on.
Oh, do you want to do just the, just a recommendation?
Thank you. So this is about nominating Mayor Thomas for the position of the General Management Committee of the Local Government Association of Tasmania, which is a very important role. And I think you've all read your papers. I just have one question before we start. This is a paid position and the current pay is $50,000.
Yes.
An excess of $50,000. Are there any cars or anything else to go with it?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. Okay. Who would like to open to debate? Alderman King? Second to vote? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
All right, Alderman King.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Look, it says under clause 26 of the policy, a ballot is not required to be held. So this is, we don't get many, not so much no brainers here, but unless there was something wrong with the mayor being in this position, I think there's everything right with her being in this position. So, or potentially standing for this position. So I'll just leave it at that. I think this is full steam ahead.
Any further comments?
Deputy, my only thing is I commend anybody for standing forward in local governance issues, whatever. My only concern is that the mayor hasn't been in this position for a long time. I just wonder whether or not, you know, she'd like to give herself some more time. And secondly is that the time that the mayor could possibly away from this organisation during that role. I know it is a very, very busy role and it concerns me. I just think at the present moment, we've got a great nucleus of elected members. We've got a good leader, we've got a good deputy leader. I just think that, I think what the hurdles we've got to go through in a number of ways, financially, certainly in the next three, four years, we want the teams thinking positively and being here all the time. There is a lot of absenteeism and away from places through this role. You know, I will support it, but I'm just raising it because you will be absolutely told.
Any further comments?
I'd actually like to disagree with those particular comments. I don't think we can judge what the workload is. I think that Mayor Thomas is potentially best placed to do that, given that she is already sitting on the committee and would be well aware of what those commitments are. I think her nomination, it certainly shows us that she's, she would be able to work out that balance of time. And I think that's possibly speculative to say that it may impact here at this point in time. I think she's best placed to judge that and we can call on her if that happens. But obviously, other people have had this role over many years and they haven't seen that impact on their councils or haven't heard of feedback that there is a way that it can be managed. And so it'd be up to the individual to do that. So that would be my comments, that Mayor Thomas would put herself forward. She didn't think she could still give to Galnorki in her full capacity.
Any further comments? Well, I'd like to disagree with you very much, Alderman Dunceby. I have witnessed this role from the level of being a Lord Mayor. And I have witnessed presidents previous have to work extraordinary hours all over the, from one end of the state to the other. Usually they've been off small councils where they can dedicate and they don't have as many meetings or council meetings and the workload that we have on this one, which is nowhere near as great as obviously Hobart, but still becoming increasingly more significant. I commend Mayor Thomas for wanting, she's very ambitious, she's very capable, and I'm sure she'd do an excellent job. So I'm quite happy that this council nominates her. I do share Alderman Slade's concerns that it is a huge workload and it cannot be underestimated. And that's why it's remunerated fairly well. But I know Alderman, Mayor Thomas will work, she'll make it work. So she's, it's not a guarantee just because we nominate her because there are other people standing for the same position. But as long as we're aware that, you know, this is a significant role. It's leading local government going into a period of time where we're going through major negotiations of random amalgamations, forced sharing of resources, et cetera, et cetera. So it'll be good to have someone with energy and drive and commitment, which Mayor Thomas has in spades. But I think that's the only hesitation I have is it's going to be an enormous toll on her personally. But if she wishes to do it, I can see no reason why we wouldn't support her. Other than I'll probably have to sit in on a few more things. I'm glad you've got faith in the deputy. Any further discussion today? I've put the motion, the recommendation, sorry, is. Back to the mover. Oh.
Out of practice.
A little bit out of practice, there was. Yes. So Alderman King.
I can just say no, nothing now, that'd be easier. But I couldn't do that to you. Well, that's a, look, I think all valid points have been made. And the mayor is a capable person that can look after herself and make her own decisions. And what Alderman Slade said is totally correct and is a very onerous position. And I'm sure if she felt that it was too much, she'd just have to resign. But first, it's a nomination, not a selected position as yet. So good luck to her.
That's exactly right. I think we should, we should well. So all those in favour? It's decided unanimously. General Manager, we move on?
We're going to item 14.
Right. We're now going on to the elected member training request. And like somebody, thank you, Alderman King. Anyone like to second this? Thank you. Thank you very much, Alderman Rock. Do you like to take off, please?
Take off? Certainly. Thank you. Look, I've had a good look at this and this council spends very little on additional training for the Alderman over the years. I think Alderman Slade would be able to concur, very little is being spent on positions of improvement for the Alderman. And the mayor taking this opportunity, which I believe will benefit council in general. It's not an onerous cost, it might appear to be to people, and she is benefiting from it, but so does council. So it's a growth opportunity for her, which means a growth opportunity for council. It's been costed out probably a little more than what it's really going to cost. And that's fine, we should over-cost these things. So I just think it's an appropriate use of funds for the mayor.
Alderman Slade.
Mayor, I will be not supporting this. The reason I'm not supporting this is that I'm a strong person for good governance. And in relation to this particular, we go to the first item, the whole structure in relation to the two events. There's allowance for Alderman $2,000. Now, if the amount's not there for $2,000, in my mind, you don't get it. The reality is that referring to council's other training areas, right? Well, that's for the staff, that's not for Alderman. And I've checked this out through the senior managers here. I've checked this out. I've spent a couple of days checking this out. And this is wrong, poor governance to allow our staff, who probably need some good training at times, inability to apply for that, yet we're asking for one of our elected members to dabble into that pool of money to go to two events. I support, I don't support going to Australian Institute of Company Directors one here in Hobart, Deputy Mayor, because they have these going all the time. And the reality is, is they may not have all the face-to-face ones, they certainly have the online ones. And appropriate time to do this could be post-July one to do that. In relation to the third one, I've checked, so seen that our money left for Alderman's expenses is $2,940. So my feeling is for the third point, the mayor should go to the Australian Local Govern Conference. And the cost that we bear on that is drain that totally there of $2,940. And she pays the remainder, which of course is only just over $300. I think it's a very fair outcome, considering that we're doing it as we should, by the budget, bearing in mind this is rate payer's money. It is money for training for staff, it's not for Alderman. And if we feel that it's, that we haven't got enough money for Alderman, then during the budgetary process, why don't we put forward that we need additional money for funding? And that's approved or looks through, we go through it and it does get through the, you know, it's been correct. Then the person applies that, one of the Alderman can apply for that going forward. The way this reads now, Mayor, what's stopping another two Alderman in the next day making an application to the general manager to go and do that course as well? Because the reality is, are we going to use the same area, the, for staff and management costs rather than for elected members? Because it's very obvious, it couldn't certainly knock back another two Alderman and then approve this one. No way in the world. So I'm being very honest. It's nothing to do with personality, I'm simply going to what's in front of me. I went through my budgetary processes, I went through the budget lists at the weekend, and clearly this is out of kilter, it's not applicable, the money's been gone and there's only $2,940. And I'll explain to you how I support that in the third recommendation.
Okay. Alderman Dunceby?
I'd actually like to flag whether we do it now, whether it needs to be a foreshadowed motion, that we consider the two items separately, so that items one and two are considered together and that item three is considered as a separate measure. Because I think there's different arguments for both of those. So up to you, Acting Chair, Deputy Mayor, whether we, what's already before us or I foreshadow that much.
Well, I must admit, I was a bit amused they came together for the same reason, because it's an extra.
Two weeks apart.
Sorry?
It's two weeks apart.
Yeah. I still think it's wrong to lump them in the one sum. So it is with the support of what we have.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
All right. Do you want to put that up as a procedural motion?
Do that, yes. Items one and two are considered as a separate recommendation from item three.
Just say, I think Alderman Slade's wisdom in researching this is important to take on board.
It is.
Based on that. And just on that point three, that is an estimated amount.
Probably we need to deal with a motion.
It's a procedural motion, so there's no debate. Therefore, all those in favour of separating these two issues, say aye. It's decided unanimously. So we'll go back. Are you happy as the mayor that just accepted it, sir?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And I heard your point.
Sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Point three, that is an estimated amount. And looking at the costings, they're having travelled to Canberra many times over the last six years. If it's not a sitting week, it'll cost a lot less than what. Sorry? The mayor would pay that? Yeah, she paid, she already, yeah, I think she paid the difference. But I think if it's not a sitting week, it'll cost less than that to, for accommodation and transport and things of that nature. But nevertheless, if we approve a figure, then we've approved the figure. I think if Alderman Slade's point is right, that we've got that much available, that's what should be the limit.
So we're dealing with this new motion now. I would just like to make a comment. Is that okay? I actually am a fellow of the Australian Institute of Company Directors. So I think it's a highly valuable accreditation, I suppose is one word to have. I pay for it myself. What I'm noticing on other boards that I am on is that no membership fees are paid by any organisation. So you are expected to be a fit and proper director with that particular qualification. And you can't go on to a government board, to my knowledge, without having done that course. So you're expected to have done it at your own expense. Having said that, I have always said that I believe Local Government Association should do a deal with the company directors and provide a local government form of these company directors' course at a reduced cost for all elected officials, because it has such a monumental benefit as outlined in this report, to raise the skills and standards of Alderman or councillors. My problem with this is I, I think it is not fair that the mayor is paid significantly more, gets to go to a lot more attendance and things like that. As I said, it's not going to fit me because I already am a fellow. But I would believe that this is something that every director should have entitlement to. So we have a $2,000 per year. I thought it was per Alderman. You telling me that's.
I thought per Alderman.
Is it? Training allowance?
Through, so Deputy Mayor, it's, there's a two, the policy talks about 2,000. The budget amount, I guess, reflects the fact that there isn't.
The budget amount, I guess, is, reflects the fact that there isn't, historically hasn't been full take-up of the training budget. So, you know, if, if it was full take-up, the policy would be ten by two, which is 20,000. In this case, we've got two, two, we've got two line items. We've got a, a line item which is 6,150, which is for Alderman as a group. These are the budget amounts and Alderman as individuals, 3,588. So all up, 10,000, doing my maths here, 738. Is, is the, is the total amount that's in those budget line items at the moment. So we're assuring, we're not assuring total take-up of the training allowance every year.
Okay, so hypothetically, the membership fee is a tax deductible, fully tax deductible thing that the mayor can pay for and get reimbursed at the end of the financial year. As for the course, my thinking is that the $2,000 a year, it should be $2,000 a year, I would believe, per Alderman. For training, as would be expected in any organisation with a turnover of this amount of money. So I would like to say that if it was taken over the four-year term, the $8,400 or dollars would be paid. And maybe we, if we were to negotiate for anyone round this table who wanted to do the company directors' course. But say for example, we've got six Alderman interested, that'd be reduced to say 8,000. So that covers the four-year term, but if we had to go to 2,500, I would accept that. But I don't like it being just for one Alderman and because of the privileged position of being mayor. It should be, it's an, everyone here has the same legal liability of being a councillor. So if you do not have this, if you do not have this AICT after your title and you would like it. And you believe it would add incredible benefit, it's not easy, it's a tough course. And you have to understand, even though it's sort of, the report goes to great pains saying this is not a tertiary thing and it's not something else. It's a very valuable commodity to have after your name. You have more chance of being on a paid board of $16,000 to $100,000 if you have done this course. So let's not whitewash it and say, no, it doesn't, you know, it's just a simple little thing, we'll just do it one, one year. I believe councillor Kendall has as much right as Alderman Cockshut to do this course as the mayor does. And I also believe that, that $850 membership fee is an individual expense. And if somebody needed help with that, if they weren't in a financial position, they could pay it off out of their allowance over time. But Alderman, General Manager, could I ask? Is that a possibility? At any, or maybe we should ask, are there any Alderman here who have not done it? Company directors' course and would like to do it? You have?
No, I would like to do it.
You would like to do it?
I mean, I'd love to do it, but I haven't considered the expense.
It's the account of order.
And we did do an abbreviated, if I could just step outside of that square, we said we did do an abbreviated company directors' a day course. He wants, we did get an accreditation for this, in fact, they did, Peter Brooks this time. So we, we came in for a day and did a course.
So it's not really relevant, the course is, is a lot of work. And it's, it's, you know, you really should pass it to actually qualify, I'm not certain how it works now. But I would hardly recommend it to all of you for good governance of this council. So I don't see it as a waste of money, I see it as an investment in skills. However, with that, with that criteria, that the membership is paid by the individual because it's tax deductible. If assistance is required, then the council could facilitate that as payments out of your allowance. And it's either all in or no one in. And those of us, it was just bad luck, but we might want to go and do one of the other courses at some other stage. But we, in this case, so in the Hobart City Council, it used to be far more generous until a few people took advantage of it in a very bad way. So it used to be $5,000 per year. And so if you wanted to do a really serious course, you could take it over the four years. So that's my logic behind this, because I fully support what Alderman Slade is saying. And do you get what I'm talking about, General Manager?
Yes, so what I, just to paraphrase, so, so what you were suggesting is that the, the membership be paid privately and, and be a tax deduction. And that the potential to do the AICT course be based on the contributions out of, out of this, under this policy over multiple years.
Yes, and bear in mind, the whole, the whole thing is tax deductible if we were to pay for it individually, but it's just beyond the average person.
Just a question, Deputy. I think it's, the reality is, is that, I kept personalities out of this, but the, in relation to the amounts and whatever. I suppose that I think it's, and I say it's a very, it's a very cool course, but there is a possibility that we could review the actual ceiling during the budgetary process. So that may make that equation into the four years a little bit easier. I'm not getting into what Hobart's doing, whatever, but what I'm just saying is, I, I, I raise my thoughts and comments fully along a governance line and along a personality line. I've done the course like yourself, it's absolutely, I done it in 1990, it's worth everything it's talking about. But I just think that perhaps that's another avenue, the question is, could we do that, just look at that through the review process of Alderman's expenses?
Yeah, because like it's extremely valuable accreditation to have. Alderman Duncey.
Thank you, I'm aware the $2,000 sits there and training in this sector is very expensive, even though a member will get, any offerings that they have are still very expensive. I think the offerings for the training for new Alderman and councillors that was held was, you know, that took up a significant amount of that particular budget. So I would hate to think we'd be putting new Alderman and councillors on the back foot because they've already taken it up by doing a significant course like that. So one, I think we do need to have a look at what the dollar value might be for the benefit of everybody. The other thing, I think the pro, the policy needs to look at as well, when we've got to come down and justify what a definition is of training. I think the, the policy needs a rewrite around that, that we have to define that if we're not here seven, eight, nine, 10, training and things like that. If our policy determines it at that level, I think that needs a relook as well, so a suggestion perhaps for that to be looked at. In terms of the actual application from the mayor, I'm listening to what people are saying around the table and I actually agree, I believe that that should be a personal expense. And I won't be supporting that particular application in this first part of the motion. Thank you Alderman King.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, just want to say the clarity, so the motion we're voting on now is the combined one and two.
Yes, yes. But it will have to be, it will have to be modified by somebody. I'll have to get somebody, if you want a positive outcome.
It's easy to modify.
Sorry, and, and for point three, the 3235 number, was it 2,900?
That comes next.
Alderman's 2,900.
Tiny different discussion.
Through you Deputy Mayor, so where we're at at the moment is, we've had the original one, two, three recommendation moving seconded. There's been a procedural motion to separate one and two from three, that's where we're at at the moment.
Currently discussing one and two.
One and two as a.
Yes.
Question, if I made through you, Chip, was there going to be a change to one and two?
Well, there would have to be if we wanted an outcome similar to our discussion.
Otherwise, just be a yes or no.
So the easy, the easy way to do it, General Manager and Deputy, is, which I was going to do, I was going to move the motion, just like this, is that you disapprove the request. And then, and then include the reasons, right? And two's eliminated and that's it, in the first part.
No, no, because we're not allowing it to other Alderman.
Sorry?
So either we let this one lapse and someone moves a foreshadowed.
Well, I'll move a foreshadowed one. I'll move a foreshadow on that council disapproves the mayor's request to undertake. Oh, sorry?
Denies the request.
Oh, sorry, denies, whatever the right words, best there, the request there to undertake the company directors' course at a cost of 8,449 as automatic expense, right? This other one.
That's a separate motion.
No, it's two, no, two, I was going to put there, but I would include that those reasons, General Manager, so there's a positivity to that as well, you know what I mean? And I would take away two.
So.
I would three just.
No, the threes are different, no threes.
Otherwise, that makes it an $11,000 course. So if anyone round this table wants to take advantage of it, to get their four years of training.
Yeah, I, I just thought, when I, sorry Deputy, when I read that and taken up what Alderman Duncey was saying, you know, honestly, and no reflection to General Manager. The two or three pages explain the different sorts of training to, to, I've got to be careful here, to not substantiate, but to try and bring in the $850. The discounts, bring it down, right? Well, I think it's, it's irrelevant really. Or the other way, now that we know that, you join up as a member first and you go along to the events and whatever, and then you apply to cover, to do the course, so.
And we're not, we're not actually giving the General Manager permission to allow any Alderman who would like to join the mayor, should she still proceed?
Deputy Mayor, just, just, this is one, this is a request at the moment that we're dealing with. We don't want to bring another.
No, I'm just, I'm just disapprove, I'm sorry, what was that Alderman Duncey word, you said?
Deny.
Deny the payment, right? The request on the.
That's a foreshadow.
Foreshadow.
One and two, just one and two.
One and one, two's crossed off. Oh, no, it's not included. And on the basis of those points that were mentioned.
I need some clarity around what, I've, I've taken notes, but.
Okay, it's right.
I need some clarity about what those reasons are.
The first one is that it's not within the budget for Alderman's expenses. Exceeds, exceeds the budget.
Exceeds yearly budget or?
Annual budget.
Annual.
Current annual budget for Alderman expenses. Two, you can all participate, not just me. You go, oh, what's the second one?
Equity of access has been raised.
Yes, yes, that's right, that's very good, equity access. And. Well, the first one, as I said, is a major one with the governance and, and not in the budget. You think of a third one, it's positive.
It's positive.
I don't want anybody off here.
Membership fees should be individual expenses.
Yes, that does it, and that then cuts out the reason, General Manager, why number two's, is cut out, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So through you, Chair, you said that anyone can join and then do the, the course after.
You can join now.
You can join now, and that would be at your expense unless, as an Aldermanic body, we decided that if someone round this table was going to be in a position of hardship and wanted to do the course and take advantage of this. The elected members' training should be extended to, for this, because I do think it's such a valuable course. That we would allow them to take that money out of their honorarium for, you know, like over a period of time.
Our question, General Manager, are the membership, would that be an individual membership or would it be taken by council?
No, it's an individual.
Individual membership, so other people could potentially live roof of it, everybody would have to be in that same situation.
It's non-transferable.
Thank you, no, thank you, just a clarification.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, just, just regarding clarification, so we're talking about individual Alderman councillor. Up for the membership, 3,940. And then, they would then have access to that 3,400 discount?
Yes.
In this, it has to be this financial year?
No, no, there is a discount, sorry, sorry, for the chair, there's a discount if you are already a member and you want to do the course.
Yeah, yeah, so we're talking about then the overall course of that, that, sorry, the cost of that course would be, was it four, five?
Eight and a half.
It comes down from eleven each way.
Obviously it comes down from eleven, apologies.
Thank you, sorry.
If you're a non-member, it's 11,849.
Yep.
But because you're a member, which is 8,400.
Okay, sorry, I was just trying to clarify.
Okay, so what are we voting on?
So Deputy Mayor, at this stage, we've got that council denies the mayor's request to undertake the company's directors' course at a cost of 8,449 as an automatic expense. For the following reasons. The claim would exceed the current budget for annual.
Automatic.
So the annual budget for.
Alderman's training.
Alderman's training expenses.
Right.
Equity, equity of access.
For other elected members.
For other elected members.
And free.
Membership fees should be individual expenses.
That's right.
Point of order, we actually do have this current one and two before us, we haven't voted on that yet, that's only a foreshadowing.
Yeah, that's true, so we have to vote this down to put the foreshadow. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're now going to vote on points one and two.
Or are we voting on all three to start with?
No, just one and two. If, if it lapses, then we go to the foreshadow. Okay, so, so all those in favour say aye. Okay, you want to put your hands up.
That's what we do, but you know.
All those in favour? Okay, no one's in favour, so that means the matter is lost. Lapses.
You're doing a good job, keep it up.
Yeah, I'm rusty. So now we have a foreshadowed motion, which is basically going to achieve the same outcome, I think.
Sure.
But we're quite, it also clears up that bit about membership.
I should have jumped in first here.
Yep. Okay, so now we have the foreshadowed motion, do we need that up?
Do you want to read that again?
Yeah, okay. Need to be good governance, Anthony.
So we've got the substantive part of, the core part of motion one. I'll, I'll read, again, I'll read, it's not consistent with what's on the screen, so I'll read what we have. Denies the mayor's request to undertake the company directors' course at a cost of 8,449 as an automatic expense. For the following reasons, could exceed the annual budget for automatic training expenses. Would not provide equity of access for all elected members and membership fees should be individual expenses.
Right, so point two is, yeah. Anyone got any commentary on this one?
Yeah, three, Deputy Mayor, just, I guess, I, I can understand the budgetary and the, and the technicalities. Technicalities of, of the stepping through the, the process. I, I guess as a whole, I, I'm, I'm mine very much for, I think you'd agree as well, that those courses are absolutely invaluable. And I really, I would really like to see all of us, including the mayor, be part of that. I've done a two-day course as well in Not For Profit and it was invaluable, absolutely invaluable. So I guess my, my commentary on it would be there's a, I'd like to see this considered perhaps for our annual plan next year. In terms of being able to, to facilitate this somehow, whether it's for the mayor or it's an opportunity for within us. And we, perhaps we can negotiate a deal with, you know, I, I guess my commentary is that training is invaluable. And as soon as we stop learning, we start going backwards. And the better we're trained and the, if we have the tools and the, the understanding, the better our performance as a council will be. And that's representing our community and I think it's, it's, it's an important thing to really note. So my, that's I guess my comment, I don't really have any questions.
And I think it's recognised that the AICT is a leader in governance.
Absolutely.
That is one.
Just for you Deputy, that AIC would exceed, oh, she's right, she's got it, the, the annual training automatic budget.
Annual automatic.
Elected members' budget, that's it, yeah. And should the speed be, would not provide equity.
Equitable access to train.
For all, for all elected members, and I think that's really clear then, Deputy.
Just scroll up to three, if that's part of it.
No, it's not.
So we don't need two or three, do we, Jerry?
We don't need two.
Two's gone now, two will go.
Two's gone. She's taken two, right?
Three needs to go.
Yes.
Three's the next one.
Three will be the next, the next.
Three goes.
It's just magic, isn't it?
Sitting in a little room just.
Yeah, okay, I think we're all satisfied with that. Councillor Kendall, David.
Uh, Councilor Kendall, did you forget that? Sorry, many people got forget. Um, so could we just get some more information, yeah, maybe on notice from you, um, General Manager, about can those expenses be carried over year by year? Is that impossible?
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor, it's not part of the current policy. My recommend, that nation would be that, um, the council may want to consider, uh, a little bit of guidance in the, um, it, it sounds like from the discussion, there's, there's a desire for a review sooner rather than later, perhaps as part of the budget process. So we, I believe the policy's due for review in twenty twenty four anyway, but, uh, there's an opportunity for the, um, for, for the policy to be reviewed potentially at the same time as this year's budget process to provide, um, to, to provide for a more contemporary standard of, of.
Yeah, I, I really think that policy is well overdue for renewal. So, yeah, that might be good, or someone might try and respond to a motion, but thanks, Councilor. Um, because I think we're all in for a general agreement that what we'd like to see.
Okay, so. So could I just ask that I'm amazed, is we won't exceed the annual elected members' training budget?
Yes, bottom, at the top there. In that number one, ah.
Thank you. Everyone happy? Uh, therefore put that motion, always.
We moved a second.
Alderman King, did you want to comment?
No, no, we're, we're good. But just, number three that was there before, so that's gone altogether now?
No, it's coming back. One more question. Should that amount of the cost be the eleven thousand dollar cost? Because that's the cost of the course, and we've taken away the explanation while we could have considered eight four forty nine. Should that be the full eleven thousand eight hundred?
The real cost.
Alderman Dunsey's right on that. Yeah. Yeah.
Could you only give the discount if you pay for it?
Yeah, that's right, and that's not a consideration here, so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't include the cost, Alderman Dunsey. Because like everything, giving goes every two weeks, um, the General Manager, uh, to undertake the company directors.
Eleven oh forty.
It's actually called the company directors' diploma course. At cost, add, add, and don't put the price in. Add cost, just add cost.
No, add, as, just take out, add a cost of eight four nine.
Yeah.
So it's a course as an automatic expense.
If you had add cost, and didn't put a price in there, you'd be saying whatever the cost is.
Doesn't matter, because it's a one-off. It doesn't matter.
Point eight covers that, you know.
Yeah.
Because it's got to be above two thousand dollars, so it's quite of an assumption.
So I think that adds up to turn into an as.
Well.
Did you say it's called the diploma course?
Well, I thought it still was, I just checked that, um.
I think the website calls it the company directors' course.
Just come, okay, that's the answer.
No, no worries.
Yes.
So Deputy Mayor, where we've got to, I think, is that we had, um, uh, we had a, um, a motion from, the substantive motion, the original motion from, from Alderman King and Alderman Cockshut. We then had a procedural motion to separate out the two items. The, uh, the original motion for one and two was lost, and then we've got, at the moment, we've got an Alderman Slade foreshadowed an immediate motion or a new motion. Um, we don't have a second for that at the moment, so we'll have a second.
Thank you, Alderman Cockshut with a second.
Thank you.
So we move back to the mover of the foreshadowed motion. Do you have any commentary?
Um, I just, that would have been basically, Deputy, had I could move the motion originally, I should have done that. But I think it undertakes the comments and the rationale why, uh, the reasons sort of have a rationale, why I had concerns, and expressed or supported by, feel relative, and I'm happy to add formally.
Yes, so perhaps, General Manager, we could have the issue on our next workshop?
The, uh. Could we say a four, future workshop?
Yep, yeah.
What?
It doesn't need to go into the motion, it would just be good if you put it there.
Okay.
Okay, so we now have this new motion, and all those in favour, put your hands up. All those against, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on to, we're making a new motion?
New, a new item two.
New item two.
Join me to.
Which is, well.
It's as written, General Manager.
Yes.
With the last bit, instead of being three thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars, it reads what's left in the budget for automatic, automatic expenses for training for two thousand twenty two, twenty three, being the following, two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
So that would be a foreshadowed motion.
Yeah, that'd be a foreshadowed motion. So first of all, we've got to get this one up for discussion. So if I could ask for a mover and a second to, for the purposes of discussion, we have Alderman Dunsey and Alderman Cockshut.
Alderman Dunsey, thank you, I'm very happy to support the Mayor's attendance at this, I believe that for benefit for attending at the, um, national level, that could be brought back to this particular council would be of great benefit to us, and obviously she would take that on to, um, her other roles as well. But it would help her to, um, get the national picture and, and set up some networks and contacts as well. I'm happy to support the full cost of her actually attending the, the conference in Canberra, or the General Assembly as it's called. Um, I believe the benefits are there for, um, us to leverage off if she is, uh, representing and attending. Alderman Cockshut.
I agree with Alderman Dunsey, I think we should cover the full cost, the three thousand two hundred and thirty five. Um, it'll be a great experience for the Mayor, and just relate back to that Elgat and also us as a council, what they can bring back to us and discuss, so I'd be more than comfortable paying for that trip.
Thank you, Alderman King.
I've looked at the costings for this, and it depends if it's a sitting week or not, that this, it's not a sitting week. I think the cost would be much more likely to be around the, the budget, the amount that's left. Certainly tax and fares, you wouldn't use a taxi, however, it would cost you about fifteen bucks anywhere in Canberra, from there to wherever. Um, I've been to that many times, and hotels, if it's on a non-sitting week, will be cheap as chips, um, et cetera. So I think it's got to be up to, a figure up to, we agree on, not a set figure. What does it say up to?
Set estimation, so.
Question, Deputy.
On, so.
Um, where does the, we're exceeding the, still going to exceed the automatic training budget. Uh, and I'm not getting down to, not being childish here, but we're still exceeding that. What, I cannot see the issue of keeping it properly within governance of the, not doing incorrectly by the two thousand nine hundred and forty. As the two thousand nine hundred and forty doesn't suffice in relation to, uh, this person going this time as the Mayor. That's a great job going there, that she pays the extra, over two thousand nine hundred and forty.
I think Director Richardson wants to say something.
If you wouldn't mind, and I think you're a big man, could I just ask that if you could be confirmed by a finance team? I'd rather see a full reconciliation come to, uh, council to fully understand what that amount is, because it may, it may not actually be as Alderman Slade is suggesting.
Through you Deputy Mayor, I did talk to the manager of finance, um, before, and he provided me with a, um, a balance for that. The line item, the account for Alderman training for individuals, and, uh, that has a budget of three five eight eight, an actual of six four eight, uh, six four eight, so it leaves a two, two thousand nine hundred and forty dollar balance, so that's the.
I did retain.
Update advice.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Well, I'd like to say, it, it still bothers me with the equity issue. See, I think it's just as important that Alderman Dunsey would be able to go to this, should she so choose. It isn't a matter of, um, it's not the Mayor's conference, it's the local government association. So if you lived in Canberra, you would probably just pop along and go. If you lived in Melbourne and you had a training or conference lounge, you would, might decide to use it. Um, I, I have nothing against it, I'm not going to be mean if, if, that is, if the council is the will, think that's an acceptable amount. But I'm, I'm true saying, I am saying, we seriously need to look at these things and say, okay, you're employed for a four-year term. There's X amount per year, and if something like that goes over your amount, say, so we agree on two and a half thousand or whatever, and you chose to do that instead of your company directors' course, that's fine. But I would much rather see everyone here go to the local government conference. And that's often not the case, because the council can't afford it. So flying, just heading off to Canberra, I, I've done it, uh, as a Mayor. And, and you don't make lifelong contact, so you're there for a few days, well, it's two, two days. So I think we need to put this in context. I only, I'm quite happy to approve it, but I would like to say to you, I honestly think this is an equity issue again, and all Aldermen should be treated equal, for the purpose of attending conferences or, uh, training.
Deputy, another thing, that, my previous life in the council did, we used to put forward a training, things of coming up three months ahead, so Alderman could plan and whatever. Now, I know, I haven't seen it since I've been back, I think it's a very healthy thing to do, and that helps this process too.
Yeah, because there's usually a years' notice on these.
I know, yes.
Yeah. So Alderman Yaxley.
Thank you, three Deputy Mayor, just wanted to ask the question. Does, do Aldermen now have access to that training of three thousand five hundred and eighty eight?
No, the two thousand nine.
We're talking about, that's the total.
Two nine four hours left until the thirty for June.
So two nights for a lot of. Budget for everyone?
Yep.
Right. So there's no individual budget?
No, if it's over five, you could put into the General Manager's seat if you can take it up.
It's over two. Yes, that's what I'm just, just clarifying. Right.
That's correct. So any, any request over, over the two thousand limit, uh, I need to bring a report.
Yep. We've got to stop sort of thinking in individuals and what that person's going to gain. It's like, it's just as important that everyone who's got a career in local government has the same access to knowledge as anyone else. So I was very disappointed the two arrived in the one motion, and I wouldn't like to say that again. So, um, we have split it, and we're now in, in this situation where only one Alderman can take this up. And it's whether or not we spend the extra three hundred dollars over our budget, which is trivial in the scheme of things. But, uh, from an equi, equity access point of view, I'm disappointed. Because again, all of these things, any one of us can go to these and claim this a tax deduction. Some people get paid a lot more than others. So if you have a career trajectory and you want to use these things for networking, uh, if it's not attainable through your training budget or our training budget. And, you know, we've got to remember what we're here for, not promoting an individual, but to, um, upscale the council. And one person going to a two-day conference doesn't come back and sit us all through a week's train. We learn. But we used to get a report back, I bet, so we should have a report back, a written report justifying your trip.
Yep, I had to do that in my previous life here.
Hmm, well, hopefully it's still in the policy, I can't remember. Alderman King, a question?
Through, yeah, just through your chair, just, could we change it then from estimated cost up to two thousand nine hundred and forty, so that we, we not got a, a ceiling of what's left?
Or just put within.
Is that a good government side?
So within, within the remaining automatic budget?
Yeah, agree with that.
Uh, well, we could, but someone's going to have to move that, Alderman Cockshut?
Sorry, this is a quick comment, so obviously we've got the two thousand or a hundred in the training budget.
Yep.
In this handbook for Aldermen, Aldermen also get, or council, sorry, two thousand per annum to spend on things like travel, for instance, and I don't know what is left of the Mayor's particular budget, so could it be, so now whereby the motion says the two thousand or a hundred from the elected members' training budget, with the remainder to come from the automatic allowance of two thousand per year for travel.
But the Mayor's exempt from that, I think, yeah, because the Mayor gets a car, petrol, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, just to pour the water in there, if we'd saved up your two thousand dollars for the years we've been on council, I'd buy you a car. Never use that.
No, but you should, I, I, I think, you know, have access over the four years.
You should, it should be cumulative.
Yeah, well, that's my opinion.
I agree, I agree, it should be like you.
Particularly when you're coming to training.
Yeah, maybe I think Alderman, um, he actually summed up to what that amount would be, you know, that's to win the budget, to whatever the budget amount is.
So, so are we just, you know, just agreeing for two nine?
Well, I'm, I, I, I'll remain my comments on two nine, for, because, because that's an actual figure, that's, that's what the budget figure is.
And General Manager agrees.
Well, somebody has to move, is that right, Amendment?
Uh, the, the mover and second can accept an amendment to the, to the substantive motion.
So who's the mover?
So, so Alderman King and Alderman Cockshut, um.
I'll go back to the beginning we talked about here.
Well, just recalling what's happened, um, move.
You did, Alderman Dunsey moved this one.
Um, so the motion, the mo, the original motion was by Alderman King and Alderman Cockshut, uh, which was then split into two halves. Um, so the first half that was already moved and seconded by Alderman King and Cockshut, um, was lost, and then a, a, a foreshadowed motion got up, but the, the, um, part, the second part was still, um, moved and seconded by King and Cockshut, came forward into here. Uh, and now, and I, uh, I took Alderman Dunsey as opening slate on.
Happy with that, Alderman Dunsey?
There's no problem, is that?
Okay, so Alderman King.
So the, the motion, original motion was moved by King and, and, um, seconded by Cockshut, and the motion was then split into two halves, the original motion for the second part, uh, was still originally moved and seconded by King and Cockshut.
So it's still the same item number?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I'll move the, the wording change slightly to, uh, bring use of the automatic funder up to the balance of two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
And you happy with that, Alderman Cockshut?
Yes.
You don't have to be.
No, I'm quite comfortable, I did say originally I would be happy to, so. Just while I get Alderman Slade's point regards to governance and the amount and budgeting process, so I think, you know, what Alderman King's all says about taxis and hotels, and there's a lot of variables in this, um, number of the three two three five, so I'm more uncomfortable putting the two nine forty number in there in place.
I'm, yeah, sorry.
I'm, I'm never, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm like a councillor.
Yeah, um, just trying to consider, like, I'm never a fan of kicking the can down the road, but, um, thinking about a timeline around this decision, um, possibility of putting it off to, for the purpose of equity, maybe extending the offer to the rest of the elected members if there's any training that they want to do before their financial year, or maybe we're able to answer that question now, and happy to support using the rest of the financial year's budget on this item. Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to find a way to make it more equitable.
Yes, have you other question, Alderman Cockshut?
Other question, I've got more, I've got more, a general statement, I'll get, um, Councilor Kendall's comments there. I guess it's been a very long discussion, we've gone, it's been a lot of time on this. I think we've known that the policy is up for review in twenty twenty four, and we are going to go into the budgeting process, so I think let's get together in that process, look at training, what we would like to make as the budget, and we can factor in for those sort of trainings moving forward and update the policy, and then that's the most appropriate thing to do at a given time and the manner of the issue.
Sorry, so which, what were you leading then?
Well, it was more like general comments, so.
Oh.
I, I get, I'm just saying, like, we're about to go through the budgeting process.
So you, you're happy with the status?
I have, yeah, yeah, I'm more happy with the status, it's more like general commentary from the.
Alderman Slade.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, I've got a question. Is there any, there's, for the General Manager, is there any further money in the auto, in the automatic training budget? Or for expenses?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I support equity, Councilor Kendall, but that's the answer.
So if you support this, um, no one else can count?
I support what you're saying, but it's just, it's no other money.
Any further commentary? Okay, and I put this motion to the vote, all those in favour?
Do you want me to close?
Oh, would you like to close? I thought you already had.
No, like, other people were speaking, I couldn't have closed it.
Sorry.
No, no, it's, it's all right, it's fine, I think we've come to an understanding that this is the total amount of the budget.
I think we've come to an understanding that this is the total amount of the budgets that's left for automatic training. And if we vote against this, then that budget money is still there available for other aldermen to use between now and the first, the 1st of July. But if it doesn't get used, it gets lost.
Yep.
So we need to be aware of that as well, because at this point, we don't carry money forward. If we did, several others would have a lot of accumulated funds in the bank, so to speak, so.
Only within your four year term.
Yeah, within a four, but even so.
Lesses after that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so what we need to understand is if we approve this, then there's no money for any other aldermen.
But hypothetically, if the mayor was to say, no, I'm busy those days, we could put it back and say, well, Alderman Kendall, would you like to take it up? But you would have to add, pay the extras.
Exactly. So.
I think it's a lesson going forward that we all believe is secret.
So that's my closing, I'm pretty much, we are where we are, we, I think we've accepted what it is. It's, and we've got three months to go, pretty much till the next budget cycle, and so we can either be, if you've got something in mind that you want to be doing training for now, then vote against it. If you haven't, then I think we just move forward. No, I don't mean to push people in that way, it's just, that's the reality of it.
Major, can I ask when the next local government association gathering is?
Uh.
State one?
Uh, through you, I was going to say through you, Deputy Mayor, just directly to you. Um, I just need to, I might get someone to Google that in the, as I do, I'll be doing it.
All right, well, I think we've had enough discussion.
He's probably my own.
Yes, so we'll close the debate now, and put the motion, those in favour, say, put your hands up.
Yes, it stands.
Put your left leg in.
Put your right hand to board.
Those against? That's carried in on this line. How about that? How easy was that? And we'll be having a workshop very soon. So are we calling the mayor back in?
We don't get it.
Yes, please.
He's still here. We're close to leaving, he might kill night. Strange little guy. He's asleep, he's just going. No, sorry.
So. Alderman Kendall stepped out 5:46 for the minute. May I just have a two second break? Okay, uh, do we need to adjourn the meeting officially for that purpose, General Manager? Or do you just, does everyone need a break, or we keep going to close? Yep, yep, okay. Let's have a, we'll adjourn the meeting, do I need to motion that to cease, or are I?
Do you want a break?
I do. A couple of people need a break.
It's very important, I think.
It is important.
But just put a.
Adjourn the meeting at 5:46 PM for 10 minutes?
That is significantly less. That's obviously been generated by the permanent vacancies and also some positioning, that stuff that happens as well. Thank you. So I don't have any questions relating to anything that's there. I think it's, we've got to crank up the capital work expenditure to the end of financial year. We're being really sure that that's going to be happening, that's probably the biggest difference at the moment. But obviously, all the projects are happening. I'll throw it open to the floor for any commentary.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsey, any further discussion? Councillor Kendall.
Yeah, just a question, and I agree with Alderman Dunsey about the capital works expenditure being the most notable part of the budget. Um, maybe I could seek some more information on the 551K hit to the materials and services expenditure? And I think 408 of that is contractor costs. And yeah, just wondering what that increase is about, is that as an offset to the gains in employment? Like, are we using contractors more because we don't have enough staff on? Or are there just rises in prices of contractors due to the conditions? So, yeah, that's.
Thank you, Councillor Kendall, General Manager.
Uh, through you, Mayor, so the, the notes to the financial performance report talk about um, uh, increasing amounts for contractor costs of 408,000 and fleet and plant costs of 116,000. But our finance manager is here if there's a need for further clarification.
Um, I don't have the, through you, Mayor, I don't have the finer details of the variance, but it is probably a combination of increased contractor costs because of the current economic difficulties, and also timing as well, because this year's budget was predicted almost 15 months ago. So people predict their spend is going to be happening, it changes month to month. So it could be that some expenditure has been brought forward or put back, and it causes a variance. But it is in total scheme, it's only a minor variance in the multimillion dollar budget.
Thank you. Can you turn that back to the General? Um, no, thanks. Okay, the discussion was over, can you move Alderman? Something clear, thank you. I'll put the motion, please raise your hand if you're for unanimously. Moving on to item 15. Thank you, updated council policies, and I have a recommendation that council adopt the recording of council meetings policy in attachment two. Do you have someone to move this as a motion? Alderman Slade, come up second. Councillor Kendall, Alderman Slade.
Thanks, Mayor, I've looked at the track changes and the final outcome for foreign reporting of council meetings policies 2023, and as everything's very clear, or what's been deleted, whatever, and I think it's relevant, and I move accordingly.
Thank you, Alderman Slade, Alderman Dunsey.
Have a question, please, I'm just wondering if I can give an explanation why the recordings are going to be, and I know it's been the policy for some time, why they are destroyed after six months? We may find ourselves in an investigative situation where recordings may be needed. And I'm just wondering whether, why the timeline is only six months and not longer?
For closed councils?
Within the policy, it says that they are destroyed after six months. Sorry, I'll need to.
Am I understanding that's just closed councils because the other ones are publicly available online?
My understanding that's just closed councils because the other ones are publicly available online. Yes, but happy for the director and executive manager to answer that question.
Just get that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsby.
Through you, ma'am. Thank you, Alderman Dunsby. Good question. The Act refers to keeping the recordings for up to six months. And I think that's where the wording has come from for the policy.
Which act is that? The Listening Act? The Local Government Act?
The Local Government Act.
The Local Government Act.
Anything further, Alderman Dunsby? Sneaky. Any further discussion of the policy?
I appreciate this being brought before us. Obviously, COVID saw us introduce live streaming of our meetings. And whilst they were always audio recorded, they weren't video recorded. So there has been a shift through that period. And it's important that our policies are updated to reflect that change and that we have clear parameters around that. So happy to endorse the policy. Further discussion?
Go back to the mover, Alderman Slade. Closed debate?
I'm happy to hear it, ma'am.
Put the motion. Please raise your hand if you're for. Moving on to item 16, procurement exemption report. We have a recommendation that council approve an exemption to the code for tenders and contracts to directly appoint Tenderlink and Ilion for the period 1st of July 2023 to 30th of June 2026. At an estimated cost over three-year appointment is $31,883 excluding GST. Do you have someone to move this? Alderman Dunsby, someone to second. Alderman Yaxley, Alderman Dunsby.
Thank you. I believe the explanation provided there is self-explanatory. I don't think it needs any further commentary. Throw it open for debate.
Thank you, Alderman Dunsby. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion. Please raise your hand if you're for. Moving on to item 17, notices of motion. No, there are notices, not notices of motion. Are there any questions without notice? Alderman Yaxley.
Thank you, ma'am. Through you. I've just got a question. I just wanted to provide some background to my question firstly. I was getting a haircut and the infamous Glenrochie Faces of 2014 was there. And our deputy mayor was featured in the Faces of 2014, for those who have a copy. My realisation that this is coming out for 10 years old and I suddenly realised that this was a great asset to our community. And my thinking was who looked after it, who managed it? And who I found out was the Glenrochie Community Fund, who did a bulk of the work in organising it. It's quite a significant uptake and I consider it a really amazing asset for our community. So I asked if they were planning on a 2024 edition. And they are in consideration of that, thinking through that. So I guess my question was, obviously we have funding that's already for the Glenrochie Community Fund. Can we consider, as a council assisting, further in organising and the production of this document, I think an incredible document, for our city? Something that takes pride in homes and businesses. It's a snapshot of our history, I really think. And it would align with our community goals and strategy and building image and pride. So I guess we've got improved technology now and we've got obviously the ability to upload to the clouds and a whole range of things. But I just considered that perhaps the council could be involved in assisting in the process, considering our abilities in the technical space as well. So I guess my question is, is it possible to assist producing it for a 2024 edition?
Oh, thank you, Alderman Yaxley. I think we'll probably take it one notice, general manager, and come back with a response to you, Mr Dyckes.
Thank you.
Perhaps something for us to consider through our annual planning as well. Any other questions without notice in open council? No? Good, okay. Well, I will ask someone to move that we go to closed. Alderman King seconded. Alderman Slade. All those four, please raise your hands. Carried unanimously. Good night, Mr Steenbergen. We will move to closed council at 6:08 PM. Thank you to members of the public who have joined us online this evening. We will see you at the end of next month, 3:30 PM.